Welcome. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Weber County Commission meeting. Today is Tuesday, the fourteenth day of January 2020, 10:00 a.m., or slightly after. We appreciate everybody being here. I'm Commissioner Gage Froy. And to my right, Commissioner Jim Harvey; to my left, Commissioner Scott Jenkins. We welcome you to the meeting. We're going to start off with an invocation with Cassie Bybee, and then we'll do a pledge of allegiance with Jennifer Graham, and then I'll follow that up with a thought of the day. We'll start with Cassie. Thank you. Amen. Amen. Thank you. Jennifer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. So Commissioners, my thought of the day deals with an event that I was able to attend last, I believe it was Friday night, I'm losing track, at the Capitol, where we were able to recognize some mothers throughout the state, and two in particular for Weber County. And it was an honor to get to meet these ladies, and I'm, we'll actually have them attend a commission meeting in the future, but since this recently happened, and one of the Weber County mothers, Barbara Booth, was nominated and received the Utah Mother of the Year, which is a high, high honor. Barbara, if you read her resume, is impressive. She's raised, I think, seven children, and after the seven children, she's taken on foster children, to the tune of over a hundred foster children through the years, which is very impressive. And, you know, as you look at what makes Weber County the county it is and makes it great, I'm convinced it's because of the people, people like Barbara, and our other Mother of the Year that some of us are familiar with, Tammy Taylor. And Tammy Taylor is Brent Taylor's mother. Jenny Taylor's husband, obviously, is deceased about a year ago. Both of these women have impressive resumes, and something that obviously stood out to people across the state with Barbara Booth being recognized as Mother of the Year. But Commissioners, it was an honor to be with those two, along with the other mothers. You know, we give some recognition to the mothers in this state that do such a great job of making sure that we have future generations to carry on the traditions that we're proud of in a lot of different areas. And I don't think we do enough to recognize the mothers and the important jobs that they hold in our state, our county, and our country. So I just wanted to pass that on and look forward to these mothers being with us sometime in the future. So that's my thoughts, Commissioner.
Thank you. Great.
Thank you. Let's move on to public comments. If anybody would like to come up and take three minutes or under, now's the time to do it. I don't see a lot of public members out there right now, but, okay, it looks like we're off the hook unless Gloria wants to come up. I offered to let her do the pledge or the prayer, she said no, but we, another month, we're gonna have a better voice, so then we'll turn her loose. Okay, seeing no public comments, let's move on to consent items. And the, under the consent items, Agenda Item F, we have a request for approval of warrants numbers 2344 through 2356, and 446375 through 446580, in the amount of $2,468,278.18. We have a request for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $187,751.30. Request for approval of ACH payment to U.S. Bank in the amount of $209,530.52. We have a request for approval of new beer licenses, request for approval of new business licenses, request from the Golden Spike Event Center for approval to surplus an FD 100 credit card processor, and number seven, a request for approval of retirement agreements by and between Weber County and the following individuals: Jeffrey Pledger, Vicky Stevenson, Scott Story, and Gerald Scott Wood. Commissioners, those are the consent items. Questions on the, any of those items? If not, I'll go to Ricky, if you want to give us a little more detail on those items?
You bet. As far as purchase orders, we issued 35 purchase orders for $188,000. The largest amount of that was for $46,000, sorry, $47,000, that is for the library, and that is for snow removal equipment. We also, and that's up in the Ogden Valley branch. That's the final branch that needed that new, new equipment. For checks, we issued, sorry, we issued 219 checks for $2.5 million. A third of that amount, or $817,000, is for employee health and dental insurance. Eighteen percent, or $449,000, is for the transfer station relating to disposal costs. Ten percent, or $230,000, is for the elections office, and that is to purchase ballot envelope processing equipment. And nine percent, or $213,000, is for the jail, and that will cover a new camera system, as well as utilities, food, and some carpet replacement.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioners?
Point of privilege?
Go ahead.
You know, the four that are mentioned with the employee contracts, having been here a while, I'm familiar with them. Fantastic service they've given, not just their time and work experience, but a lot of times theirselves, after hours. I know that Lieutenant Pledger especially has handled so many issues in his career that go unsaid, but they don't go unnoticed. And Scott Story, you know, I think our tipping fees are gonna go down in Weber County with this, because Scott Story has given us so much crap.
Probably so.
Oh, he's a good guy. It's just great, though. Good for them. I'm glad, I hope things work out for him in the next chapter.
Yeah, I agree. That's, you know, you hate to see these people go, because they have such great knowledge and ability to serve the county at the same time. You have to obviously give them the opportunity to recognize that it's, time comes to move on. That's what they're doing, so.
So I'd like to say, you know, you get to know these guys, and of course, they are the county, right? When you talk about the county, it's the people. And so I just, I'm really impressed with the service they've put in. And Scott's, he was kind of the lead guy out there, you know, for all these last years, and has done a heck of a job. Anyway, they'll be missed. Wonderful people. But we also wish him well, you know, as they move on. I think Scott's gonna get a little company going, and I hope he does well.
He'll do great. They all will do great.
I would agree with that.
Vicky and Scott Wood, they're all wonderful people. They'll do fine, so.
So motion to approve the consent items.
We have a motion to approve.
Second?
And we have a second from Commissioner Harvey. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Let's move to action item under G on the agenda, which is the following: Request for approval of final reading of an ordinance of the county commissioners of Weber County authorizing Weber County residents to utilize the urban farming provisions under Utah Code Anointed Part 59-2-17. And we have Mr. John Yulbury to further explain that. Mr. Yulbury, welcome. Go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioners. I work here for the second reading of the urban farming ordinance. In 2019, the Utah State Legislature expanded the urban farming statute to include all counties, whereas the previous one only included Salt Lake County. The urban farming functions exactly like Green Belt with the following exceptions: There's an acreage requirement. Green Belt typically has five or more, whereas urban farming is one to five acres. Production requirement: Green Belt will allow for both plant and animal, whereas urban farming only allows for plant. And the application: In Green Belt, you only need to apply once. With urban farming, you need an annual application. Happy to take any questions.
Questions for Mr. Yulbury.
I know you've been working on this a long time. This will advantage and give opportunity for those who want to use their land a little bit differently than they do now. Just, it's a good property right for people, and I will be supporting you on this.
Thank you. Mr. Jenkins?
No, I'm okay.
You know, we've talked about this before, John. I think this is a great addition to our arsenals. We encourage people to use their available ground. And it, obviously, on that annual application, does it require a year or two years' previous use? Or how do you, how do you first get into the program? Under Green Belt, I know it takes like a two-year before you qualify. Is it the same requirement that way or not?
Yes. There is a two-year production history requirement.
Okay. So the earliest we would start seeing this, and it'd be actually two years from now? That'd be correct?
Well, unless they've produced, been producing for two years. We could see, as soon as this is enacted, we could start seeing applications.
Okay, so they just have to come in with proof that they've actually produced the last two years?
Correct.
Okay. Good. I like that. So, okay, Commissioners, other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
So move item G1. It would be ordinance, I see on here, it says ordinance number one.
Ordinance one, correct. So we have a motion to approve ordinance one by Commissioner Harvey.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Jenkins. Any discussion?
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenkins?
Aye.
And Chair Froy.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Mr. Yulbury? Okay, moving on. We have a request for approval of a resolution of the county commissioners of Weber County appointing a trustee to the board of West Weber Taylor Cemetery District. Ms. Keane?
Good morning. The West Weber Taylor Cemetery District had a position that expired December 31st of 2019. Roger Heslop was serving. He was fulfilling the term of somebody who recently resigned from the board, and so I posted the notice according to state statute. I received two applications for the one position. You have the applications before you.
Thank you. Questions for Stacy?
Both good, great guys. Both of them really, really good and talented men. You're out west there, Commissioner Jenkins?
Pardon?
You're out west there, and you probably know both these men.
I have no problem either of them. The only reason I think we should reappoint Roger is because he's only been there six months. He's just getting his feet wet. And so I'd make a motion that we reappoint Roger Heslop to the West Weber Cemetery District, Resolution Number Two.
Thank you. We have a motion to reappoint Mr. Heslop to the West Weber Taylor Cemetery District.
Second?
And we have a second from Commissioner Harvey. Any discussion? If not, we'll place a motion under Resolution Two. Bottom one.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenkins?
Aye.
Chair Froy?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. We now move on to request for approval of resolution of the county commissioners of Weber County appointing members to the Ogden Musical Theater Board. Ms. Bybee?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good morning. So this is, this is the Ogden Musical Theater Advisory Board. Some of these have already been serving, and their term has ended, so they're being reappointed, and others are new members. So you have, you should have the names before you in the resolution. Taylor Canuth, Miki Larson, Jeanette Bischoff, Jackie Hoff, Rhett Long, and Pam and Scott Parkinson.
Have all these people agreed to serve?
Yes.
Yeah. That's an impressive list, Commissioner.
It's a great list.
This is a great advisory board. I mean, they really are, they have their heart in it, and they're, you know, some boards, you get board members that are on the board. These are board members that are active doers. So I really appreciate all their support and help with Ogden Musical Theater.
That's great. Commissioner Harvey, that's in your portfolio.
Yes, with Ogden Musical Theater still being young, it's only a few years old, but very well attended. It does very well, very well received. It gets support from our local university. It's a great deal of support, not just locally, but all across the state. These people have done a wonderful job promoting it, and it would be with confidence, Commissioners, that I would recommend the names that Cassie's put there that's in our packet, that we appoint those members to the musical board, which would be Resolution Number Three.
So that's a motion to approve.
Please.
And I'll second that.
And we have a second. Motion to approve Resolution Three. Bottom one.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenkins?
Aye.
Chair Froy?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cassie. Don't go anywhere. So we now have a request for approval of contracts bound between Weber County for the following individuals for services related to the production of Ragtime: Caleb Saunders, Teresa Sanderson, and the Ogden Chamber Orchestra.
Yes, correct. So Ragtime, we're doing a concert-style musical theater, musical production, if you will, and that is in February, February 21st and 22nd. And this is the first time we've done this type of, of a production. And so we have partnered with Ogden Chamber Orchestra, and this production will be done with a full live orchestra, which is very exciting. We started rehearsals. Caleb Saunders is our music director, and Teresa Sanderson is our, the director of Ragtime. And we have 30 cast members. So there's gonna be 30 cast members on that stage, and the music is just absolutely phenomenal. If you're familiar with Ragtime, there's a lot of history in there, and this is a perfect time to do this musical in honor of Black History Month, which is celebrated in February. So we encourage everyone to come. Tickets are on sale now, and rehearsals have begun, and just an outstanding cast. I'm gonna be just a beautiful, emotional, and moving performance.
That's great. Sounds like another great event for our center over there.
Yeah.
What are the dates on that again, Cassie?
February 21st and 22nd.
Just two nights?
Just two nights.
Wow, great. Discussion, Commissioners?
Question.
Yeah. Commissioner Jenkins?
So Cassie?
Yes.
This is the first time we've ever had a band?
Correct.
And done this, huh?
A full orchestra.
Right. So basically, the orchestra pit will be open, and they'll be sitting there?
Correct.
This is a big deal.
This is a big deal. It is. And, and when you put, yeah, full orchestra to the, to an event like this, you know, to the, to the musical, to the play, to the production, if you will, it, it does change things.
You bet.
It's, it's a lot of work, because he'll have, so Michael Palumbo, he is with Ogden Chamber Orchestra, and he has 18, 18 orchestra, you know, musicians that will be playing.
Cassie, you continue to amaze me.
Well, thank you.
I'm just way impressed with what you've done here.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you, Commissioner.
You are a wonderful individual. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is a local orchestra?
Yes, yes.
Great. Even better.
Yes.
That's, that's gonna be exciting. Commissioner Harvey?
You know, I remember, I remember when even members of this commi, of the commission would go and say, "Hey, you need to see how wonderful this is over at the Perry's Egyptian Theater. You need to see those things." "No, no, I'm not going. No." And then they'd go, "Wow!" They'd say, "That's one of the greatest things I've ever seen in my life!" And it really is. Every time, I haven't talked to a person in three years that's walked away from any of those events that said, "Ah, I won't be coming." They're just really, really quality. And it's, it's amazing that our little, our little county, Weber County, does so much good, that, so much so that other counties all across the state, including Salt Lake and Cache, are wanting to emulate what we do. It's wonderful. You're doing a great job there, and I appreciate you bringing that orchestra up and that. For those who haven't seen the orchestra pit at the Perry's Egyptian Theater, it's a nice-sized pit. It'll take all 18. You know, for those who are really in theater, that, some of them, you can't get that big orchestra in there. It's gonna be really good with the acoustics in there.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
We're excited to do this, and it is, it's growing. And when you bring up Salt Lake and other counties and things, you know, Ogden Musical Theater is now drawing on actors that, that are, you know, applying or, well, auditioning, not applying, but auditioning at Health Center Theater and Tuacan, and, and we're, you know, working with them. And I've been Logan, so it's, you know, we still have a lot of work to do. We're four years young, right? So there's still much work to do.
We're four years young with an 80-year history.
Yes.
True. That's very true.
So good things happening.
Oh, that's great. We better hurry and buy our tickets, it sounds like.
Yes.
Get them before they sold out.
Yes, because you know what? Spencer Stokes is playing the grandpa in this.
Oh, wow.
So I went to Spencer, and I said, "Hey, I need all your buddies and all your legislative friends to come and see you in this," so.
Did you make him shove his mustache and beard?
No, but, but he does play the part of the grandpa very well. I've seen him in rehearsals.
That's great. That's worth seeing just by itself. Good. Okay, Commissioners?
I'd make a motion that we approve item four, which is contract bound between the following people: Caleb Saunders, Teresa Sanders, and the Ogden Chamber Orchestra for the production of Ragtime.
Second?
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you very much. Motion carries. Thanks, Cassie.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to Agenda Item Five. This would be a request for approval of a contract between Weber County and U.S. Foods purchasing, warehousing, and distribution functions, and other related services for food and related non-food products for Weber County venues. Jennifer, welcome.
Good morning. Cassie and Duncan get all the fun stuff, and I get the, I get the spreadsheets, the policies, and the contracts, so.
Both of them are very important, Jennifer, so.
This, this contract is gonna be between U.S. Foods and Weber County. We're kind of tag-teaming on with a state contract through USU to allow us to use U.S. Foods. We order such a quantity of food through them every year that we want to be in compliance with purchasing ordinance. And this is a contract that our attorney's office specifically, Chris Crockett, has been working on for probably close to a year, I would imagine. And bringing us into compliance with purchasing ordinance while still allowing us to get the quality food and the quality service that we need, so that we can be ready for these events. So I'm just looking for approval of this contract.
Great. Thank you. And I'm assuming the contracts, Chris, did you want to discuss the contract at all, or?
It has taken a while, a lot of back and forth going between the county and U.S. Foods, but we have an agreement that our office is comfortable with in recommending approval for.
And I'm assuming they're comfortable with it?
Yes, they've signed it.
Oh, great. Okay. Commissioners, back to the commission.
Integral park makes up quite a large percentage of our cultural parks and recreation budget across all the facilities. And Mr. Chair, if you're ready to entertain a motion?
I am. Go ahead.
Make a motion that we approve the contract bound between Weber County and U.S. Foods.
Thank you for that. We have a motion?
Second.
And we have a second to approve the contract with Weber County and U.S. Foods. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Let's move on to the German Fest. Mr. Olson, you're up. This was a request for approval of a contract bound between Weber County and the Gruber Family Band for entertainment at the 2020 Hof German Fest. Mr. Olson?
Yeah, so this is one that, that we approved a few weeks ago. When they started booking their flights, flights were just a little bit more expensive than we had in the contract, and so we wanted to be fair to them. And so we've redone the contract, bumped it up to cover their flights. There's, they're coming Friday, Saturday. They'll be playing a lot of fun music. They're excited.
Where are they coming from, Duncan?
They're coming out of California, I believe.
Okay. Great.
Come out of Northern California, is where this band is one of the favorites of the, of the Hof German Fest. And if, my only suggestion on this, Mr. Olson, is if they are one of the performers selected for 2021 that we contract with them early enough to be able to secure better pricing for flights. And you'll have the dates, they'll have the dates, and then the onus would be on them to make sure they secure the pricing based on what'd be best for them and not on us. But that'd just be-
Yeah, for sure.
Throw that caution in the wind, but unless there's any other comments, I'll make a motion when you're ready.
Go ahead. I'm ready for a motion.
entertain, or I'll make the motion that we approve the contract bound between Weber County and the Gruber-
Gruber.
-Band for the Hof German Fest.
Is that German?
It's Gruber, just like Frö is the name for German.
I recognize the ER, so.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that. Thank you for that. We have a motion.
I'll second it.
And we have a second to approve the contract between Weber County and their Gruber Family Band. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you for that clarification. Okay, let's move on to, Duncan, stay there, request for approval of a contract between Weber County and the Weber State Rodeo for hourly practices in 2020 in exchange for community service. Duncan, you wanna explain that a little bit?
Yeah, this is one of my favorite contracts. Weber State, obviously, they're a club team. They don't get a lot of funding to, to support their, their team. And so one thing that we've done for the last several years is we exchange practice time in the riding arena with Weber State. In return, we get, their athletes come out and they clean stalls for us. And so when we host the big icebreaker rodeo, Weber State's team comes in and helps our, our changeover, because during that time, it's rodeo season, we're going through, you know, a few thousand stalls through that month, and our guys get a little worn out. And so having that, those fresh arms and legs to come in and help really does a service to us. And so we've, we've done this contract with them to, to help their side as well as ours.
Thank you. Questions?
Chair, this is, this is absolutely a great thing that they, Duncan and his team have done, because it also provides an opportunity to talk in the aisleways of the stalls, a recruitment tool for Weber State, who have had national championship teams, rodeo national championship teams. And these are people who then become, they can be local heroes, like many of the NFR champions we've had in the area. So it just keeps the world's greatest rodeo athletes local, and makes another great art of living in Weber County. So very much in favor.
Yeah, and it, it's a definite investment into our culture. You know, we need those guys to keep rodeo and to, to keep us and sustain ourselves. So it, it does multiple things, for sure.
I would agree. It's a great relationship there. It's a great partnership. And how, how is their rodeo club doing? Is it?
Um, you know, I, I don't know how their season has started off. I couldn't really tell you. They, they just started getting their team together for the, the spring season. But I know several of their athletes have been competing in the winter series and doing pretty well. And so I think they'll have a good year.
So they still have good attendance and good participation, I should say, at the club, club level?
Yeah, for sure. You know, I don't know the, the dynamics at Weber State, but I know they're always fighting for money and scholarships and those kind of things. And the more money and scholarships you get, the better athletes you get. And so I think that's a constant battle for them. And us kind of helping them bridge that gap a little bit, I'm sure that goes a long way for them.
No, that's great. And I appreciate Commissioner Harvey's words that, you know, this is an opportunity for Weber County to continue on a tradition that goes very deep in our county. And the more support that we can have on both sides benefits us all. Commissioner Jenkins?
Well, nothing to be said.
Hey, I'm looking, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the contract bound between Weber County and the Weber State Rodeo Club for the 2020 season.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve that contract between Weber County and the Weber State Rodeo Club.
Second.
For the 2020. We have a second. Commissioner Jenkins? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Let's move on to, let's move on to agenda item eight, if we might. That's a request for approval of a contract between Weber County and the Interstate Detective Agency for the Indigent Defense Act. Seems like we're dealing with this every week.
Yes, uh, last week you approved several of these contracts. This is one little straggler that we were waiting for a signature on, so we're bringing it to you for a recommendation for approval. This is for investigation.
This is down the same road that we have as we appointed attorneys and everybody else we've appointed for the, to take care of this Indigent Defense Act.
Yep, and this one will be specifically for investigation services.
For investigation, okay. Uh, do you think we've got everything covered now, Chris?
Uh, yes. Mr. Barron has been working very hard on these particular contracts that, uh, he's written, they're extremely well-written, very well-covered, so, um, yes, I do believe we are covered.
And this is, obviously, you know, I make a little bit light, this is something that's critical that we do as a county. And that we have the right people in place from attorneys to represent those people because if we don't, as we all know, that can come back to cause future problems and liability. So tell, tell Mr. Barron we very much appreciate his efforts.
Absolutely.
Questions, commissioners?
None. Motion to approve, Mr. Chair, the contract by and between Weber County and the Interstate Detective Agency for the Indigent Defense Act.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion to approve. Commissioner Jenkins seconds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll now move to a request for approval of a contract between Weber County and the Golden West Credit Union for detention pond maintenance. Mr. Tucker White, go ahead, Tucker.
So this is one of two agreements that we have with Golden West Credit Union up there in Eden. This first one is just a typical agreement that we have for their stormwater detention facilities, saying they'll maintain it. If they don't, we have the right to go on and maintain it if we need to.
Great. And this has to deal with the new Golden West Credit Union in Ogden Valley?
Correct.
The Eden office, is my understanding? Correct?
Mm-hmm.
And we actually reviewed this, both of these items, with Mr. Grover yesterday, I believe, and I think we're comfortable with them. Questions? Comments? Action?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve that detention pond by and between Weber County and the Golden West Credit Union.
Thank you very much.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Jenkins. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. White, let's go to request for approval between Weber County and Golden West for maintenance of the public right-of-way.
Yeah, so this agreement, well, part of the whole development process for the Golden West Credit Union, they'd have access off of the highway there, but they had, during the review process, we found that the road right there would be, need to connect and go through to the, I forget which road it is, on the west side there, but, um, so we required that they put in this road. The, the neighboring property owner was, was nice enough to work with them and they were able to lead over to Weber County a section, this, this piece of land. Um, it doesn't go all the way through yet, but that's why we have this agreement that in the future, when it does, Weber County will take over the maintenance and things like that. But until then, Golden West Credit Union will, will facilitate those, that maintenance.
Yeah, so just to clarify, this is a road that isn't in place right now. It's a future road that would go west into the development, uh, in that, in that particular development, and at which time it goes in, then they're required to do the maintenance on it.
Yeah, yes. So, yeah, right now, they'll be the ones maintaining snow removal, stuff like that. And then in the future day, if this road does ever go through, or when it does go through, uh, we'll make sure it's up to our standard and then we'll, we'll take over maintenance from there.
Great. Thank you. And since we're on this subject, did we clear up the situation we had with the dark skies and the lights, Mr. Grover? Are we, we're still working on that?
Thank you, Commissioner. We are working with the applicant on that. They're aware that they're in violation and we hope to have that in compliance within the next probably a week or so. They need to put shielding on some of the lights or replace the fixtures, basically.
Right, okay. But they, they have been made aware of that?
Correct.
That's, that was my main concern. Thank you. Okay, commissioners, we're back to the maintenance agreement on the Golden West Credit Union.
I'd make a motion we approve that agreement, number 10.
Thank you.
Second.
Commissioner Jenkins. Motion by Commissioner Jenkins, second by Commissioner Harvey. Place a motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tucker. Let's move on to agenda item 11. This would be a request for approval of a resolution of the county commissioners of Weber County appointing members to the Utah Association of Counties Board. I'm the presenter. I'm going to let Ricky Hatch explain since he is closer to this. Uh, we, the situation came that we actually had two members currently sit on the board, Commissioner Harvey and Commissioner Jenkins. Due to a recent bylaw change, that has been reduced to one, is my understanding. Mr. Hatch, you want to explain that in a little more detail since that's your association?
Yes. Uh, the, the sole purpose of this is we want to see Commissioner Jenkins and Commissioner Harvey arm wrestle for the position.
We decide, yeah, we're deciding on which is the best, whether it's going to be a two-mile run or an arm wrestle or something, something in between.
Yes, this is recent changes. Weber County has had a presence on the UAC Board of Directors. In fact, over the past probably seven years, Weber County has been more represented in proportion to its population than, than expected because of some of the great leaders that the county has put, has brought forward to serve, to serve UAC.